I second the motion.
Should we do all that again then?
I vote that we call this meeting to order.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you going to run this? You're the senior member.
Okay, so.
Does anybody have any questions for the surveyor?
I just want to ask one question. There are homes on both subdivided parcels, correct?
There what?
Homes. There are single-family homes on each parcel.
I guess I just wanted to ask, are there any plans in the future to subdivide the 51-acre lot, the larger, the Lot 2, the larger one? Thank you.
There may be a lot-line change with Laurel Brook though. They might just exchange a little piece of land so they have access to Aminia Union Road.
So the piece that now belongs to Laurel Brook doesn't have access, there's a tiny, what is it?
135 feet.
135 feet along the road that we could give them so that they have access. That would reduce the 53.177 acres to...
Well, I don't know, about half an acre maybe.
Is the 51-acre Lot 2, is that under any conservation easement?
Not as of present, no.
Is there a plan to put it under?
Yes, there is. We have everything around it. Obviously the Dutchfield and the 88 acres from our original 150 acres is on the conservation. Eastman, 66 acres across the road is now on conservation easement. We're in the process of going more conservation easements on the mountain, where we have another 330 something acres. So we haven't worked on this yet, but it's obviously that's going to be one parcel. That's our home and it's going to be one parcel.
That's the 50, you live on the 51 acres?
Well, it's actually 53 acres.
53.
53.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns about this subdivision?
Was there anything from the neighbors?
Nothing. Nothing in writing to the file, for the record.
So I vote that we vote on the proposal.
So do we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing and...
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to accept the resolution granting an area variance for minimum lot size for a subdivision at 189 Aminia Union Road.
I second that.
I agree. I...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the variance is granted. Thank you.
Want me to read it? I'll read it. Whereas Michael Levin and Laurence Designac Levin, the applicants, seek an area variance for minimum lot size requirements related to the proposed subdivision of a 61.896-acre parcel located at 189 Aminia Union Road, The property, previously amended by a lot-line adjustment filed as map number 12830, and whereas the code enforcement officer, the CEO, denied the application for subdivision by letter dated November 11, 2024, and the planning board referred the application to the zoning board of appeals, the board, by letter dated December 12, 2024, and offered a positive recommendation to the board. And whereas the proposed subdivision creates an 8.719-acre parcel, Lot 1, and a 53.177-acre parcel, Lot 2. Whereas the property is located in the town's rural agriculture RA zoning district, where 10 acres is the minimum lot size pursuant to the dimensional table in section 121-11B. And whereas the applicant seeks an area variance of 1.281 acres for Lot 1, the application, and whereas pursuant to zoning code section 121-59D, paren 1, the board has the authority to review an area variance from the dimensional requirements. And whereas the application is a type 2 action for SECRA, opposes in accordance with 6 NYCRR617.5, paren C, paren 17, for the granting of an area variance for a single-family home. And whereas pursuant to general municipal law 239M, the application is not subject to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development Review per an intermunicipal agreement exempting area variances for presidential uses. And whereas pursuant to zoning code section 121-59G, a public hearing was held on the application on January 21, 2025, and the public was invited to comment on the application at the hearing or submit comments prior to the hearing for consideration by the board. And whereas at its January 21, 2025 meeting, the board made the findings below, which are being memorialized by this resolution. And now therefore be it resolved. The board finds that the granting of the requested area variance will not result in a detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood or community. In so finding, the board notes that granting the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor will there be a detriment to nearby properties, that the proposed 8.719-acre parcel will be adjacent to the Hamlet zoning district, which has minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet, depending, dependent on the availability of public utilities and is surrounded by parcels of similar size. That the 1.281-acre variance is not substantial, but that the size of the variance alone in this instance should not be determinative, given the character of the property. That the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and that the difficulty is self-created by virtue of the applicant's desire to subdivide the property. The board finds that on balance, the applicant's request for an area variance shall be granted, and be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the Town of Aminia Town Clerk within five days of the date of this resolution, and shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period. The forego... Okay, so also I'd like to say that there are some findings attached at the end, which are really helpful. Thank you. And we should sign now? Judy?
Judy calls.
Yep, I will call the roll call.
But you don't want us to just sign on the paper? Oh, go ahead.
I guess they are requiring your signature on here, so.
Yeah.
The foregoing resolution was voted upon with all members of the zoning board of appeals voting and signing as follows. The foregoing resolution was voted upon with all members of the zoning board of appeals voting and signing as follows. Terry Metcalf, chairman, absent. David Minnecat, absent. Paula Pelosi.
Yes.
Jim Wright.
Yes.
And George Bistranson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Do you want us to sign yours? Just cross it out.
Laurence, do you know when the house was built on the 8-acre parcel?
It's probably the, the house itself is probably in late 19, late 1978. Basement is, there's a very old stone basement, a very old stone carved place that probably dates from a hundred years before that. It's Rochester, right? Is it Rochester on this side? Well, the, the, part of the valley has now, is...
Should we close?
I'd like, I'd like to... I'd like that we close the, what, the regular meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we...
We can't open the other one till...
Are we prepared to approve the minutes from the last meeting? I move that we approve the minutes from the December meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, isn't here.
Yeah, so I guess we'll have to bring this back up again.
Really? It's not a quorum?
So move that.
Okay.
Move those minutes to the next meeting.
All right, so we're finished? I move that we close this meeting?
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
So now we can talk? What? What?